Good afternoon. I call to order the administrative meeting of the Burnley County Commission for Tuesday, April 23, 2019. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a silent invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alan Sanchez. Thank you. We'll next go to additions or changes to the agenda. Shirley, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, yes, there are two changes to the agenda. We'd like to defer item 5A under Human Resources, the Employee Recognition Program Awards, to the May 14, 2019 BCC Administrative Meeting. As you know, the county manager is out and she would like to present those personally. The second deferral would be the 8B under Commission, the minutes of the April 9, 2009 Administrative Meeting, because the meetings were not attached to the packet.
All right, I move approval of those two changes. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also asking if we could defer item 4D, the United New Mexico Soccer Team. We couldn't find somebody available today to come in and accept that, so I'd like to defer that till we can do that.
All right, any other?
Oh, you are here. Oh, okay. All right. Sorry, I take that back. I'd like to leave that on the agenda.
All right, so we have a, I move that we defer 5A and 8B till our next meeting. We have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner O'Malley, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Shirley. All right, we are on to proclamations. So the first proclamation, I would, I'd like to jump to item 4C, actually, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate you moving it up on the agenda. I would like to invite guests. Senator Michael Padilla is with us and also the President of CHI, St. Joseph's, CHI, and that is Alan Sanchez and his staff, if you would please come up to the podium. And I'm going to read the proclamation and then if you would both say a few words, appreciate it. This is a proclamation that's sponsored by all of the Commissioners, whereas, whereas all children deserve to grow up in a safe, stable, and caring environment with the support and services they need to thrive and succeed in life, and whereas research shows that child abuse and neglect change a child's brain architecture and that the effects of child abuse and neglect can last a lifetime. And whereas last year in New Mexico, there were more than 6,400 substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect, with nearly 2,000 of those cases occurring in Burnley County. And whereas New Mexico State Senator Michael Padilla sponsored and Governor Michelle Lujan-Gresham signed a bill creating a new cabinet-level department in New Mexico, the Early Childhood Education and Care Department, whereas Senator Padilla is a longtime advocate, supporting legislation to reform and improve child welfare services offered by the state's Children, Youth, and Families Department. And whereas child abuse and neglect are 100% preventable, and April is recognized, nationally recognized, as a time to celebrate children and the many collaborative programs in Burnley County designed to serve children and the betterment of their lives. And whereas CHI, St. Joseph's Children, is a nonprofit provider offering free prenatal to early childhood and visiting services for children and families in need of instruction, information, and child development support, along with case management referrals to additional resources. Now therefore be it resolved that Burnley County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and calls upon all citizens to increase their participation and support of the community efforts to keep children safe, happy, and healthy. I thank you both for, and also your staff. Senator, if you would like to come up and say a few words, and then Mr. Sanchez, if you would as well. Sometimes we, I mean, obviously, we're very challenged in the area, in this area, but there's a lot of folks who do a lot of work around us. And, and, you know, I just want to thank you for the work that you've done over the years. So if you would say a few words, I'd appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and Madam Vice Chair, and members of the Commission, and Madam Clerk, and Madam Deputy Clerk, and others. And I just want to thank you very much for recognizing this very, very important issue here in New Mexico. I think we know that child abuse leads to just a lifelong struggle with things related to health, whether it be physical health or social and emotional development and any number of other things. A lot of folks that, a lot of children that wind up in the, in the child abuse cycle, you know, at a very high rate wind up in our correctional institutions and repeating that type of behavior. I have disclosed, you know, as I've been in office, that I grew up in multiple foster homes as a result of child abuse and things of that nature. And it used to be really hard for me to talk about it, but it really makes me very proud to do the work that I do now on this topic. And I think we have a two-minute limit, so I'm going to be really, really fast.
That's okay.
And, and I will tell you that we've been able to sponsor multiple pieces of legislation and have been able to get them through the legislature, a couple of them a couple of times, placed on the former governor's desk, and I'm not going to get political today. But this is an issue that faces all of us. We all have a responsibility here. And you highlighted the Early Childhood Education and Care Department. This is an effort that I think is going to truly move New Mexico forward to end the cycle of poverty, which is one of the biggest factors to leading in the direction of child abuse. Child abuse leads to something called ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and ACEs wind up with just severe health-related issues and things of that nature. Have also been able to get legislation passed and signed by this new governor related to the expansion of foster homes by allowing family members that come forward, which are usually the ones that know when something like that is happening in the home. And so that's going to dramatically expand the number of foster homes, reduce the number of children per foster home, so the quality of care will increase that way. We also passed and were, had signed this year a significant piece of legislation that's going to take optional fostering for young adults at the ages of 18, 19, and 20 to provide them with a softer landing into adulthood related to employment, transportation, healthcare, the legal system, credit, transportation, all of those things. And so I'm very proud of that work. I'm also very proud of CHI, who is here with us today as well. I've done a little bit of work with them over the years, and I'm sure you'll hear from them. But thank you very much for the recognition and for recognizing this very, very important issue for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Sanchez, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the invitation. Good evening, everyone. Very happy to be with you here and very happy that some of our home visitors are with us this evening and our Director of Public Policy. But in a more special way, we have a family that's participating in the program that joined the Commission here tonight. Thank you for, for being part of this. You know, people ask me, what's home visiting? And the simplest way I can say this is babies do come with instructions and it's a home visitor. They're a baby whisperer. And, you know, starting from prenatal, once a week for three years with a curriculum of health and well-being, visiting that family weekly. So they go in once a week for three years with that curriculum, and that changes everything. And for these babies, then, we know they grow up and starting school and they're not behind. UNM is doing a 19-year longitudinal study following 400 of our children to show the outcomes. We're the largest home visiting program in the nation, and in the metropolitan area, we've already had over 4,000 families participate. We take zero money from government agencies, but we advocate for those who are contractors to the state, because this is, this is how I think the best education begins. It's like a potter in New Mexico, those beautiful pots that we make. And you see that potter, that's like the synapses growth in the brain, 9,500 per second growing. But when we have an adverse child experience, that's like poking a hole in that clay, like the brain. And then we take that, that brain, and we want to pour the big investment of K through 12 in it, and we can't understand why it's not holding it. So when adrenaline goes to the brain, it stops the synapses growth. But when we see families in home visiting, it's a whole change of health. Health for today and health for the future. And this is how we're going to go forward in, in New Mexico with our children first. And I appreciate the Commission for your work and really putting the children first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you make the case, obviously, for early intervention as soon as possible, and it makes sense that you would work with families as, as soon as you can. As, as you say, you know, it's, it, it's very difficult to fix people later, and I think that we all want to do that, but it's very difficult to do that. And also, it's extremely costly to do that as well. I think that's something else. And the, as Commissioners, we've, of course, been very supportive of programs throughout Burnley County. In fact, that's been some of the mental health money that goes towards those kinds of programs. So I really want to commend your advocacy. I think, you know, so first focus at the beginning and trying to address the issue before things get out of hand, and then we've got a lot of folks on the front lines and are very grateful to all of you. If you would please come on up and we have the, something we'd like to give you. Thank you.
All right, next we are on for A, Mental Health Awareness Month. Commissioner Piscotti.
I will read the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. And this is sponsored by all the Commissioners, Commissioner Maggie Hart-Stebbins, Debbie O'Malley, Stephen Michael Casada, Lonnie Talbert, and myself. Whereas mental health is essential to overall health and well-being, and whereas an estimated 1 in 5 adults in the U.S., that's 43.8 million or 18.5%, experiences mental illness in a given year, approximately 1 in 25 adults in the U.S., that's 9.8 million or 4% experiences a serious mental illness that substantially interferes with or limits one or more major life activities. And approximately 1 in 5 youth aged 13 through 18, that's 20, 21.4%, experiences a severe mental disorder at some point during their life. And whereas, there's a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas, mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas we have far too often witnessed the tragic consequences of untreated mental illness in our community, from substance abuse to homelessness and incarceration. And whereas, with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental illnesses and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas, Burnley County Commission has prioritized developing a behavioral health continuum to meet the needs of consumers, family members, and constituents as a whole. And whereas, the Burnley County Board of Commissioners has vetted and approved Behavioral Health Initiative funding for 19 community programs through four community-based subcommittees, which are crisis services, community supports, housing prevention intervention, and harm reduction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month, done this 23rd day of April 2019 in Burnley County, state of New Mexico, and it's signed by all the Commissioners. And so Katrina Hotrim.
Hi.
Hi, come and tell us a little bit about the Behavioral Health Initiative and what you do.
Oh, certainly. So my name's Katrina Hotrim. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health Services for Burnley County. And the Behavioral Health Initiative is a tax that we receive annually, and our annual, our annual revenue is about 20 million, started out about 17, and we're now at about 20 million. And our job is to help put safety net services in place that are not already, in services that are not already funded by something else for children and adults. And so we've been working hard on putting a continuum of care together, and right now we are focused on crisis services, both stabilization services that hopefully we will be announcing soon over on the MATS campus, hopefully with a new name and everything, in partnership with University of New Mexico Hospital. We have been part of the ACEs and Reduction of Adverse Childhood Experiences, mobile crisis teams, community engagement teams, and several other things that we are trying to put together that help stabilize this community. So we are honored again to be here and to talk about behavioral health in a meaningful way where we can actually put money and, and efforts into making sure that we're making a difference for this community. So we will have an event at the end of the month, I think it's on the 24th, on the Plaza, that will have providers there, and hopefully we'll have clients, as well as prospective clients and family members there that are in need of services and will be able to access services there. So with that, I...
And so that's the 24th of May?
Yes.
Okay, so for May being Mental Health Month. And do you happen to know if anybody is having an issue or they want, is there a hotline or something like that here in New Mexico?
So Madam Chair, Commissioner Piscotti, there is a New Mexico Crisis and Access Line, and, and I don't have that number with me at this point, but there is a crisis line that's available. We've been trying to tap into more of that so that they can describe the array of services for Burnley County that are not just Medicaid-funded, because that's their, that their, their list of thing in their, in their computer, but we also want them to talk about the Behavioral Health Initiative as well. And we are also handing out that number to them so that we can access more of community engagement teams. So I think we're trying to incorporate that number into everything that we do in terms of people receiving access to services.
That's great, and as probably some of you know, I'm a mental health therapist, and so this is very close to my heart. Oh, and I see my assistant, Joe Noriega, has probably brought up the website with that number.
You're hired.
So thank you so much. Yes, so we are at 1-800-662-7474. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. So since you're here, I just received a request today that we help publicize National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. And I know in previous years, we've been really engaged with DEA and DOJ and some of our other partners, and, but this was the first that I heard about it. Could you just really briefly talk about what this is and why it's important?
So, yes, Commissioner, you know, Drug Takeback Day is a day where, you know, annually, we can look at, it's kind of like springing forward, falling back, and, and looking at your, your, your smoke detectors and making sure that you have batteries. This is a day where we actually can go through our drug and medical cabinets and start pulling out those, those old sorts of drugs and actually return them and, and have a place to just deposit them so that, that we really start curbing issues such as opioid abuse and taking them away from, from kids who have parents who have those left over in their, in their cabinets. And so I'm not sure when this day is going to be, but I think we have been working on this event. And I think that we were actually going to do something on our website that actually mapped some of this out as well.
That would be great. So this year, National Prescription Drug Takeback Day is Saturday, April 27, so that's next, this coming Saturday. So anyway, I think we have always partnered with DEA and DOJ because this is a way to prevent the theft and diversion of opioids and other medications that could end up on the street if they're stolen or left unattended in a medicine cabinet somewhere. So if people are interested, I, what I would like to do is just ask our county staff if we could highlight this and publicize it however, whatever avenues we have for that, but also if people want more information, you can go to takebackday.dea.gov. And there, there, it will list a couple of the sites that are, will be available if you want to take back your unused meds. One will be Civic Plaza, 10 to 2, Cortland Air Force Base has several locations, the New Mexico Museum of Natural History will be a take-back location, our Sheriff's Department, both the South Area Command and the North Area Command will be taking part in this. So thank you to our Sheriff's Department, the APD, APD Crime Lab, and many others. So you can find that information, takebackday.dea.gov, and I guess on the county website. So thank you for your help with that. Thank you. And Katrina, you might as well stay there because the next one is Children's Mental Health Month. So we're now on 4B, Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and this is a proclamation by the Burnley County Board of Commissioners, and it reads, "Whereas National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day began in 2005 to promote positive youth development, resiliency and recovery from behavioral health disorders, and to combat the epidemic of stigma and misinformation that surrounds mental illness at all ages. And whereas, positive mental health is crucial for the healthy development of children from birth, recognizing behavioral health concerns early in a child's life allows for healthy intervention and prevents their growing up with feelings of inadequacy, agony, and isolation. And whereas, behavioral health disorders in children are real, common, and treatable, but many families face the wa, the false widespread disapproval that behavioral health conditions and prescription treatment is due. Face the false belief that behavioral health conditions might be due to bad upbringings, overdiagnosis, or lazy parenting. And whereas, the purpose of National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in 2019 is to increase public awareness about the needs of children with serious mental illness and severe emotional disturbance, and their families, to provide information on evidence-based practices and encourage those who need help to seek treatment. And whereas, the Burnley County Commission has recognized the need to reduce the incidence of adverse childhood experiences to ensure a healthy and prosperous future for our children. And whereas, the Burnley County Commission has recognized the need to provide services for at-risk youth who are precariously housed or homeless with a mental health or addiction diagnosis to ensure a healthy and prosperous future for our children. Now therefore be it, be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes May 9, 2019 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Burnley County and promotes compassion and open-mindedness assistance, open-minded assistance by our communities to all youth who face the real and treatable pain of childhood mental illness, done this 23rd day of April, 2019, Burnley County, and this is signed by all five Commissioners."
Thank you. Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that we highlight the drop-in centers that we do, the transitional living centers that we do, and, and that you all have approved for youth, and of course, the, the reduction of adverse childhood experiences. I know that these are making a difference in the lives of the people that we're serving because our money doesn't necessarily go to support that child who is, is paid for by Medicaid, but our money is going to reinforce and stabilize the family, which is critical in changing the trajectory of adverse childhood experiences. We look forward in the future with partnering with school-based health centers as, as a big platform for doing more behavioral health, and just think that, that, you know, we, we want to fund more services in this area. So thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all you do, and thanks to our Behavioral Health Initiative team.
Yes.
We're very, we know we gave you a big job, but very proud of the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, we are now on to 4D, acknowledgment of the United New Mexico Soccer Team. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you'd like to come down and to the podium there, and I'll first read this, this acknowledgement, and then after that, you'd like to hear a couple of words, and then come up, take a picture, all right, because this is exciting for, for New Mexico. This is acknowledgment that Burnley County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge New Mexico United Soccer Team. Acknowledging the New Mexico United Soccer Team is the first professional soccer franchise in the state, and acknowledging that soccer is quickly becoming a major sport for all ages in New Mexico, with more than 2 million kids currently playing the sport nationwide. And acknowledging that New Mexico United Team will be playing a soccer match on May 5, 2019, a Cinco de Mayo event, and acknowledging that Burnley County Commissioner Stephen Michael Casada, as an avid soccer fan and supporter of the professional sports in New Mexico, is sponsoring the Cinco de Mayo match, and acknowledging that the match against the San Antonio FC will feature a salute to Mexico, and honoring all the players from Latin American countries who contribute to the soccer experience in New Mexico, and acknowledging that May 5, 2019, all New Mexicans are encouraged to go to the New Mexico United Soccer game and support the state's only professional soccer program as they play the San Antonio FC and cheer them on to victory. Now therefore be it resolved that Burnley County Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of Burnley County to increase their participation and support of New Mexico United Soccer Club as fun and exciting entertainment. Done this 23rd day of April, 2019, in Burnley County, state of New Mexico, presented this day on April 20, April 23, 2019, signed by all county commissioners.
Superbly written. Thank you. On behalf of the entire team on the field, off the field, and our tens of thousands of fans around the state, honored to be up here to receive this. New Mexico United exists to bring New Mexicans together in ways they've never experienced before. That's our mission statement. Notice it doesn't have the word soccer in there anywhere, that's just a vehicle we're using to fulfill our mission. We have a unique ethos, too, and what we're trying to do is marry art and sport. A lot of you around the state might have seen our partnership with Meow Wolf, a very noticeable name and brand, where now we're getting demand for these jerseys with Meow Wolf on them, with a very New Mexican brand, not just around the country, but around the world. We've had requests from stores as far away from England wanting to carry a New Mexico soccer jersey in their store because of the unique partnership we're building. We're excited for the Cinco de Mayo match. We, we punt it to death. We are playing in the 505, on 5-5, and we're kicking off, of course, at 5:05 PM. There'll be a wonderful set of pre-game festivities that we're, we're working with the Hispano Chamber on as well to really make it a fun afternoon for everyone, and it's going to be an incredible day of soccer. And we've, we've been very proud to represent New Mexico on the international stage in the soccer world. We were, we were trying to figure out how many fans we were going to have at a game, and we, we set our projections, and, and then we came out and actually exceeded those. We, we didn't realize the, the amount of fire and passion people were going to have for this. Shame on us. We're proud to be number two in the entire country in attendance in a league with 36 teams, number one in merchandise sales as well, and the second-place team far beyond us. And I think what we really just kind of failed to realize is the immense pride that every New Mexican has in being New Mexican. I've been here about 15 years, so I consider myself an adopted New Mexican. I married a northern New Mexican, and now I have... I married a northern New Mexican, and now I have about 70 new family members, but I'm very, very, very proud to be a New Mexican now myself. So, thank you for honoring us, thank you to the whole state for accepting us. We exist, again, to bring the state together in these unique, special ways, so thank you very much.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Sorry, Ron Patel, and I'm the Vice President of the club.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Come on up here.
Yes.[623.82][623.82](applause)
Commissioner Pescotti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and now I'd like to invite our animal care services people up with our very, very special guests. And while they're coming up, I just want to say, Madam Chair, we did not coordinate this in advance, did we? That we have animal care on the same day that we're honoring mental health, because I have to say, animals are some of the best mental health therapists. In addition to service animals, I think our companion animals are just naturally therapeutic, and I think especially animals who are adopted from shelters, like, we love them so much and they love us just unconditionally. So, it just, it warms my heart, and honestly, like, animals just make me cry because I love them so much. So, thank you, thank you for being here, and I want to read this to you, it's an acknowledgement. The Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Burnaleo County Animal Care Services. Animal Care Services ensures the health and safety of both people and animals within Burnaleo County. The department assists in reuniting people with their lost pets in addition to licensing and permitting animals through Burnaleo County. For years, Animal Care Services has worked diligently from an old county fire station. However, this location was never designed to house animals, so the department contracted with the city of Albuquerque and other shelters to house its rescues. After many years of hard work, Animal Care Services opened its new animal care and resource center on January 14, 2019. The new center allows the department to house animals itself and provide many expanded resources to the community. In its animal care and resource center, Animal Care Services will host education and training classes, youth camp programs, and community volunteer opportunities. As well, foster care and animal adoptions will bring together many wonderful animals with their forever homes. Burnaleo County would also like to remind the community that April 30 is National Adopt a Shelter Pet Day, so come down and maybe you'll find a furry forever friend. That's a week from today, and I know little, the red dog down there is wonderful and up for adoption, but hopefully, maybe not after tonight if somebody snatches him up. Animal Care Services has been dedicated for many years to the health and safety of animals and people in Burnaleo County. The department's newest services will bring Burnaleo County to the forefront of animal care and protection. The Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners would therefore like to congratulate Animal Care Services on its new facility and wish the department well in its future of protecting the animals of Burnaleo County. And so, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit from you about what the resources and range of services are, and maybe a little bit about the new facility and what makes it unique.
Hello, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioners, Madam Chair. I'm Misha Goodman, I'm the Director of Burnaleo County Animal Care Services. This is Alfie, by the way. I don't know that, we have Red here. Red is the one that was just held up, and who's this?
Quinn.
This is Quinn. So, Quinn and Red are available for adoption, that's one of the services that we have. We offer animals for adoption. Alfie came from our facility when we were in the old fire station, and he was a matted mess, and now he's kind of our mascot and goes to schools and events like this and does all sorts of things. So, we're just getting started, we're just getting off the ground. These are some of the new staff that we have here that we didn't have before. We have veterinary staff here, we have outreach staff who are doing things with volunteers and fostering and placement of animals. We have our behaviorist here who works with these animals every day, and I can tell you when this kid came in, this kid didn't act like this, so doing a great job. Of course, Rosanna and Pat have been around for a long time with the organization, Pat the longest, doing our enforcement section. And so, we're just getting started with all the services that we're going to offer the community. We're really excited to work in the South Valley area as well as throughout Burnaleo County, but we've had great results so far, lots and lots of people coming to the new facility to adopt animals, we've had great adoption rates already, and we're just getting rolling, so we're very excited about things to come. The other thing that I wanted to mention is we have a big event, kind of our grand opening, if you will, event, happening on May 18, between 11 and 4, and it will be at the new facility.
And I only see doggies here today. Are there other animals up for adoption?
You know, cats don't do well at commission meetings, I don't know why.[1001.01][1001.01](laughter) But yes, we have, we have cats, we have small mammals, we have a rabbit right now, we get in livestock as well, so yes, we will have a wide array of animals available.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley.
I was wondering if maybe they could bring the dogs around here so that they could see them better, I think, on television.
Sure.
And maybe you could talk about each dog because you said they're up for adoption, and how old they are, and so this...
You'll all have to help me out with the age of these kids.
Okay.
Quinn is two. Quinn is a Australian cattle dog mix, or commonly called a Queensland Heeler mix, in the middle there.
Hello.
And then Red is how old?
Three to four years old.
Three to four years old, and Red is...
Black mountain Kermit.
Okay, a Kermit's. We guess on these, by the way.[1057.75][1057.75](laughter) And Alfie is a groomer's dream, and is a Maltese mix, actually. And, you know, really, we try not to get caught up on the breeds of these animals. Really, what we're looking at is personality and good matches, and where we can make, you know, lifetime matches with people that are looking for particular types of personalities, whether it be the higher-energy dogs, like this one in the middle, that like to do a lot of work, or the fluff balls. We're there to try and make matches with animals that are going to work well in families.
Madam Chair, if I may follow up, it's been a while since I've been to, you know, shelter, the last one was the Animal Humane, and I was just really impressed with the time they took to really take their time with the different animals, to, you know, to get to know their personalities, and also to match them up with someone. It wasn't just a pick-a-dog kind of deal.
Yeah.
So, what are we, is that kind of the same way we're approaching this?
Exactly. So, what we do is, we have people, when they first come in, we have them kind of fill out a profile sheet. What do you, what is your household like, what is your family makeup like, and what are you looking for? What kind of activity level, things like that. And then, they work with staff to match them up with the appropriate animal. And we're not afraid to say, no, that's not a good one for you, let's look at this one instead. We have so many, I think we have right now, our inventory right now of animals is about 200, so we have plenty of animals to choose from. In addition to that, of course, the facility was built in a way to allow animals to get out of their cages as frequently as possible. We intend to have many, many volunteers, so if any of you in the audience or any of you on television want to come and volunteer, you'll come and work with our outreach staff and really help these animals out, getting them out of the facility, out into, you know, on field trips or whatever. We're going to have all sorts of different things that you can do with them, so please contact us.
And thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. So, I have a question. If a family is particular to a certain breed, do you provide notices when you get an animal of that breed into your facility, or do you just have to check the website?
Well, we're connected to a site called Pet Harbor, and we and the city are on that site, and it lists every single animal that we have in the facility that's available for adoption. If somebody has a particular type of animal that they're looking for, they can certainly contact staff, and we'll do our best to contact them back if something should come in. But it's difficult if it's been a long period of time and it's something they're looking for, that website is always available to them.
Great. Do you ever get border colleagues?
Yes, we do. Oh, yes.
Well, I may be in touch.
Do we have one right now?
Thank you.
Oh, we have one right now, there you go.
Thank you. I may see you tomorrow.
Come on down.[1251.01][1251.01](laughter)
Excellent. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Pescotti.
Do you have a low-cost bay neuter clinic?
We have a low-cost bay neuter voucher system that was set up by the commission, and we give vouchers to folks right now. What we intend to do in the future is to do more of that in-house with our veterinarian who's standing up here right now. So, yeah, we plan on expanding those services and bringing some of them in-house, which should help as well.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I just appreciate all the work that you do. I'm a total animal lover, just for the record, I have three horses, two dogs, a cat, and four goldfish.[1297.01][1297.01](laughter) And they are all my therapists, so thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.[1304.25][1304.25](applause)
public comment and communication, so 7A. I'd like to invite Randy Trask and Charles Rath, if you could join us at the podium. So, just a brief introduction as they're walking up. About a year ago, the Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Trade Alliance sponsored a trip to Singapore, and I was one of the participants in that trip, going with a number of New Mexico business owners to see if we could scare up some business opportunities for them, so Randy was, put that all together, and one of the opportunities we, some of the work we did led to the opportunity that Randy and Mr. Rath are going to talk about tonight. So, Randy, thank you for being here.
Sure. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As the Commissioner had mentioned, a couple of years ago, we did a trade mission to Singapore for food and hotel Asia. We brought three local companies, food and beverage companies with us, and given that it was a trade mission that was led by an elected official, we try and take advantage of the time by also having meetings with elected officials and other organizations in the countries that we're visiting to see if we can create opportunities. We did exactly that and met with the Singapore Economic Development Board, which sensed that trade mission. As we've continued having conversations with them, we'd identified several opportunities between Burnaleo County and Singapore. Interestingly enough, two very vibrant, high-tech sectors, a passion for expanding markets for their companies, and we decided that it was worth pursuing establishing a more formal program with Singapore, so we created ABQ Sling, which was an initiative that was almost a brainchild of Madam Chair, as we had met with one of the organizations that provides internationalization services for Singaporean startups, who mentioned to us that they have applications for foreign startups to come and do a three-week international boot camp where they can learn about how to do business in Southeast Asia, using Singapore as a launchpad. So, we developed Singapore Sling, where we held a competition for Burnaleo County-based startups to bid, or to apply for the opportunity to participate in this program in Singapore. We had nine applications. The winner, selected by a group of judges, including a judge from the Singapore organization itself, was RS21, and in just a couple of seconds, I'll have Mr. Rath come up here and talk about his experience in Singapore, participating in that program that was, that was supported by the county. But in addition to the component of having our companies be able to participate in this prestigious international, international business boot camp, we also had the opportunity to network at higher levels in Singapore and have been able to start promoting Albuquerque, Burnaleo County as a location for Singaporean small-to-medium-sized enterprises to consider as they are looking at expansion into the United States. And I'm happy to report that based on this visit in January, we have our first Singaporean-based company that's going to be visiting here to explore what that might look like, as well as a new connection that we've made between Air Force Research Lab and the Singaporean Ministry of Defense, who are talking about collaboration, collaborating in tech commercialization projects together. So, I just wanted to thank the commission for its support of this program, we hope to see it continue. It's just an example of how, as we start with, let's say, a trade mission where we bring local companies, as we continue to grow those relationships, they bear fruits that can continue long into the future. So, with that, I won't take any more of Mr. Rath's time, and I'd love to have him come up and address you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for having me. My name is Charles Rath, and I am the founder and CEO of a company called RS21. We are a data analytics company that is based in downtown Albuquerque on Third and Gold. We exist to have a positive impact in the world through the use of data. So, we do work all over the world, dealing with issues of crime, disaster preparedness, population health, and the list goes on. Madam Chair, I'd like to thank the commission for recently approving our LIDA application and funding that application. It's given us a unique opportunity to renovate what I believe to be one of the most beautiful buildings downtown on Third and Gold, which is the Occidental Building where we, where we live. We have created close to 50 jobs at RS21. Last year, we were recognized as the fastest-growing company in New Mexico. Happy to report that 85% of our employees are New Mexicans. We've also been successful in bringing people back to New Mexico to work at our company, so thank you very much for that support. I think it's a huge success story for our city. I'd also like to thank Randy and the New Mexico Trade Alliance for the incredible opportunity for our company to go to Singapore. It was a game changer for a small company from Albuquerque with big dreams. I was there for approximately four weeks. One important fact about this particular program that the New Mexico Trade Alliance, with your support, was able to orchestrate, is that the program that was hosting me was affiliated with the Singaporean national government, and that created unique opportunities for us to have entree into Fortune 500 companies, federal government agencies that otherwise would be impossible. The good news about the report, for those of us who live in Burnaleo County, is that we are very close to closing several deals in Southeast Asia. we are very close to closing several deals in Southeast Asia, which will create even more jobs for RS21, which we believe will help revitalize the downtown area. I plan on going back to Singapore later on in the summer to continue our business development in that region. This is an opportunity that, that we would never have had it not been for the support of the New Mexico Trade Alliance. I have offered to facilitate a meeting with the Singaporean government and other tech companies and the commission that I believe would benefit from the same opportunity that we were provided. But again, thank you very much for your continued support. And that's all I have. Oh, any self-respecting tech company has to provide swag, of course. I'm giving each of you one of our T-shirts. These are our core values at RS21, of course. The number one is do good with data. We're also very focused on cultivating our communities and loving humanity. So each of you will get an RS21 T-shirt, and please give us some love on social media. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So thank you, Randy. I think none of this would happen without you and the Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Trade Alliance. Mr. Rath, thank you. You were, thanks for applying. Thanks for making the most of that opportunity. You're like the perfect way to showcase what Albuquerque and Bernaleo County in New Mexico is capable of, showcase that to the rest of the world. So good luck. Please let us know if there's anything we can do to help.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We're now on to seven B, the discussion of the after-school meal program. And I believe Vince Murphy's going to present this.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Vince Murphy, Deputy County Manager of Community Services. This is a program that's run by the city of Albuquerque, but early on, the city reached out to the county to assist with the renovation of the John Marshall Commercial Kitchen to provide after-school meals to at-risk children. And instead of talking about it, because this is one of those programs, if you don't see it, you really don't feel it. So we've had, at the recommendation of, of the chair, we had a film done that really talks about not only the meals, but the impact that the meals have on these kiddos. So with that, let me show you a video produced by Paul Evans.
On any given weekday morning, you can hear the slicing and dicing emanating from the John Marshall Kitchen in Southeast Albuquerque. The crew is preparing a thousand home-cooked suppers for after-school programs.
Made from scratch. It doesn't come from somewhere else, doesn't come out of the bag from the freezer. We actually are chopping and cutting and cooking that day, send it out hot. And I think the kids know that they're getting something that's with them in mind.
Ruth Rosenstein began cooking student meals when her own children started school.
So I started at my kids' preschool and then at their elementary school, doing made-from-scratch meals every day. And that blossomed into another seven schools, and then the after-school meal program, where we now do close to 2,000 meals a day.
And that's just the tip of the iceberg, according to Daniel Valverde from New Mexico Appleseed, who says 70% of APS students already qualify for free or reduced-priced lunches.
Probably the scariest thing you really start learning and working in this type of field is what happens to a child when they're real young and they lack adequate nutrition. The nutritional deficiency is going to, like, follow these kids throughout their lives. So these programs are really set to kind of stop that in its tracks, setting up a free meal service for kids, for families as well, so they can get those meals throughout the year. It's one of the only times some of these kids can get meals.
The program is called the At-Risk After-School Supper Program, but does a lot more than just provide dinner to these hungry kids.
This is a very interesting program because it not only brings food and nutrition to kids' lives, but it also brings education to these kids' lives.
Push my fingers down. Three. One, two, three.
After-school programs, they have to have some kind of educational requirement attached to them. We have homework diners across the state. They have art programs. They have a lot of different programs that are attached to this. And I always say, food gets the kids there, the education keeps them there.
Carolina Rubio is one of those parents. Both she and her husband work full-time to support their family. She knows the value of the program firsthand.
They're doing, doing activities, or like we said, homework, having dinner, and they're supervised. And so we know where they're at. We know that they're safe. You know, we know we can reach them if we need to. And just, just having the meal is, is also a big help.
Not having the program available would seriously affect their lives.
We'd have to really talk about going down to a part-time job or, or staying at home, at least for one parent.
Yay, I wanted watermelon!
One of the main goals of the program is to provide kids with healthy, balanced meals that will lead to better lives and hopefully better choices in the future.
We really need to educate our parents, you know, as to making healthier choices for their children. Because of that, because of diabetes, you know, and obese children, you know, they, we have to think for them. A lot, they cannot make that decision. So if we encourage them, they will follow.
Eloysa Martinez has been with the supper program since its inception.
And I see the kids, they're very grateful, and I love talking to them because they're the ones that tell me what they like and don't like. So they keep us on the straight with their meals.
The New Mexico Auto School Time Network is also a partner in the program and searches out sites to provide the suppers. Currently, there are more than 30 supper meal sites operated by Bernaleo County and the city of Albuquerque.
Studying food and food and security, I never thought that, you know, after-school would be a way in which to address hunger. But, you know, this year, working with the program, learning about it, it's a very vital tool that not enough programs are utilizing.
For everyone involved, it's about growing healthy children while giving back to their community.
I feel really lucky to do the things that I'm passionate about. I love food. I love sharing food, and I like being part of this community. I grew up here, and I want everybody to benefit.
And the only thing that's going to come out of this is going to be healthy, healthier kids with more education, and there's nothing that, we can't argue about that.
Knowing that they are served a home-cooked meal that's healthy, I would, I want to continue that at home, show them that we're also at home, that these healthier choices are important, you know, not just here, because this is what the city provides, but that this is something that, you know, we value at home.
If New Mexico could be number one for addressing childhood hunger, instead of being number one for the amount of hungry children within our state, that'd be incredible.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm told we have some of the folks who were in the video here, so I'd like to call them up to make some comments, now that they're movie stars.
Ruth, I know you're here. Vince, before we introduce some of the folks here, there is a really wonderful woman who works with us at the city of Albuquerque, and I'm forgetting her name right now, but I wanted to make sure that we recognized her and acknowledged her because she's the one that really helps keep this program going.
I'll make sure we get her name and acknowledge her.
Oh, oh. There she is.
All right. Come on up.
Thank you.
Could you state your name for the record, so everybody knows who you are?
Yes. My name is Charmaine Gutierrez. I am the program manager for the city of Albuquerque and the program. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. I think what was really impressive to me is that the children were eating the food. And that, that says a lot for, of course, it's been many years since I've had school-aged children, but I remember a lot of times, they said, just, you know, they wanted me to make them a lunch, because they really, by the time, you know, we, I know, you know, APS, for cost reasons, went to centralized kitchens. So, but this isn't a centralized, I mean, this is a, I know it is to a certain degree, but the food that's being prepared there is fresh food. And so, you know, they were getting things like, I don't know, chicken nuggets and things. By the time they got to the, to the school, they were not very fresh, and neither were the french fries or anything else. But I think that makes a big difference, to get kids to eat, is get, giving them something that's nutritious, but also is very tasty. So I commend you. I, I really, I grew up, you know, here in Albuquerque, and we, we had our own kitchen at school, and we'd smell the bread, and, you know, it was really nice. That was something that my kids didn't have, but I can see that that's really important. Thank you very much.
And it is a very unique part of this particular program. And I have to say that we are very fortunate to be able to contract with Rhubarb and Elliot. They are unique in that they do provide meals from scratch, which is, was, is quite, quite rare. I am old enough to remember that back in the day, there was, APS did provide some of their meals from scratch. So we really, again, are very fortunate that they did get the contract. And I'd, I'd like to bring up Ruth Rosenstein. She is the manager, operator, and owner of Rhubarb and Elliot.
Thank you for having us and for highlighting. That's the first time I've seen that video, and it was, I was very grateful to see it because we are there doing it every day, me, my staff and I. I have 20 people who work for me, so I've created 20 jobs here in town. And we deliver, we started with nine sites in this program, and now we do 32, including five county sites and looking to some more East Mountain ones next fall, hopefully. So it's growing, and we love doing it, and it's nice to see it and nice to see you all.
Are you just, Madam Chair, are you just delivering to, are you delivering to schools or community centers, or?
These are community center after-schools programs. We do not do any APS sites because of their own nutritional services, so we do, filling gaps of other programs, including working classroom and for some first-choice healthcare. But these are all city and county after-school programs. We do another program for school lunches at, during actual school.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I sat four years on the school board for APS, and what I learned at my time there is that, you know, everything that is connected to education, all the services that we provide our students, is a community responsibility. And, and it's not just APS's responsibility. We think that we throw money at, at education and that APS should be responsible for everything, and that could be further from the truth. So after watching this video and seeing your passion and seeing, you know, what you bring to the community, it's, it's really remarkable. And I'd like to, you know, thank all of you for, for your work, because it does take, you know, the whole community involved, and we have to, we all have to get involved. As elected officials, we, we, we take care of what we can. We allocate funds where we can. But really, it's the people out there that we rely on every day to make sure that we take care of ourselves and take care of our, of our children. And so, again, thank you so much for showing us that and reminding us that, that it takes all of us.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
I would like to recognize, though, someone that's extremely important to the operation of this program. It currently is just a two-man sort of operation besides the kitchen staff, which are vital, but Eloysa Martinez, she is the site program monitor, and she ensures that every child does receive a meal. Our attendance, as you probably can understand, it fluctuates daily at the community centers. So she's out on the field every day. She is the main person that communicates with kitchen staff, and we make sure that every child gets a meal. So I'd like to thank her.
Thank you.
And, and I think there's another person who really needs, unfortunately, she's not here, but really deserves recognition, and that's Jenny Ramo from New Mexico Appleseed. So New Mexico Appleseed is an organization that's committed to solving poverty and hunger issues here in New Mexico. And she was someone that reached out to us at the county and at the city. And under the previous mayor, we were able to build this partnership and then hire a small, local, locally-owned business in Ruth's company to provide these meals. So, again, and something I think that's really important to point out is that Charmaine and Eloysa provide all the administrative services, but the USDA reimburses for both the meals and the administrative component. And so it doesn't really cost local governments anything to be providing this service. So again, it was New Mexico Appleseed that brought us, brought this to our attention, and these wonderful people who have made it possible to actually execute. And just one thing that was really striking to me, I was invited to come for the, wasn't really the first meal that was served, but kind of the rollout, and the media was there. And I think we know, just intuitively, that there are some kids who go home and don't eat when they, until they get back to school the next morning. And Channel 7 just happened to interview one of those children, who talked about how this was the meal he was going to get before coming back to school the next day. So it is incredibly important for a lot of these kids, and I think for every child who participates. But again, we couldn't do it without Vince, without your leadership and other people at the county, but of course, those of you who are doing it every day. So thanks for all you do.
Madam Chair, before we wrap it up, I would be remiss not to acknowledge your leadership in getting this going and reminding me that we need to stay with this. So we have meals at some of our community life center sites, Los Padillas, Paradise Hills, West Side, Mountain View, and Raymond G. Sanchez, and we're looking at expanding into the East Mountains. So that covers all of the districts. And I think it's an example, as we talk about leveraging the county with the city, it's an example of it worked, and it's working, and it's expanding, and it, and you see the impact. I couldn't have talked as good as that, that film was. I think it just indicates that sometimes we do lots of things and we don't see the results. And in this case, I think we're seeing the results. Thank you very much.
We're on to seven C, New Mexico legislative outcomes. So we have, I know our, oh, Clay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Clay Campbell, Chief of Staff to the County Manager. This year, we had a very busy legislative sessions, legislative sessions, I know you all were part of. You all passed two resolutions in December. One was for our capital outlay requests, and the second one was for our legislative policy priorities. So Dan Weeks and Jason Weeks are here to summarize the outcome of the legislative session. You do have a report in your packet that kind of responds to each of the resolution items and what the outcomes were in a variety of bills. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dan and Jason. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. I'd first like to thank everybody that participated in the legislative session this year, the County Manager and her staff. Clay basically quarterbacked the entire effort during the interim and put everything together in terms of these resolutions. It's, it's no mean feat to do that because they're pretty extensive, and I appreciate the staff working hard to put all of the background information together and to, to help with drafting some of the legislation. County Attorney, former Speaker, Ken, very helpful, and came up to the legislature and actually testified in front of several committees. And more importantly than that, sometimes he made a few phone calls. And more importantly than that, sometimes he made a few phone calls to some strategic legislators, which is also very important. Commissioners, you also came up on several occasions, and your assistants were up, and walked around some of the capital outlay requests, which was also very helpful. So, I guess my point is, it takes a concerted effort, and it doesn't just happen during the legislative session, it happens all year. It's getting more and more complex as we go through this process. And as you'll see, we did very well with the legislature this year. What a difference a year makes in terms of the fiscal condition of the state. For the last six, seven years, we've been squeezing the turnip every year, hoping to come back with a little bit of, of money and a few projects and a few policy changes. This year, the floodgates opened, or the oil and gas floodgates opened, I might say. We had $1.2 billion in surplus, general fund surplus, and we had over $1 billion available in capital outlay. So, we suggested that you all be pretty aggressive in your resolutions and your requests. And by the numbers, I will say, I think we did pretty well. Burnley County received almost $100 million of the $120 million that you requested in capital outlay. And that's not all, just specific to Burnley County. There were a lot of projects that we worked on that were multi-jurisdictional in nature. I think we worked better with the City of Albuquerque this year than we worked in the past with them in terms of coordinated efforts. We have the University of New Mexico that received a considerable amount of money for some of their behavioral health projects. And so, we'll be working real hard to implement those throughout the course of the year. And appreciated working with the, with the lobbyists and the staff and elected officials from those other jurisdictions. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue that coordinated effort moving into the future. So, as I said, we received $100 million in capital outlay. There is a list of those projects in this report toward the, toward the back. We're going to have a lot of work on our, on our plate, a lot of things to do. Just because we get the authorization doesn't mean the projects aren't going to move forward on a timely basis. So, I think the staff is to be challenged a lot, and hopefully, they'll be able to get these projects in the ground and spend that money, because we don't want to turn it back to the state. As far as our substantive legislation goes, also in your packet is the substantive resolution that was passed. And what we've done is we've put the action items along with the individual substantive requests, so you'll be able to see which bills passed that affected each of the substantive areas. And I think we did pretty well in that regard, too. There were only a few that kind of didn't get much traction, and we'll hopefully go back and try and get those done next year. So, one of the things that we did, and it was a, it's been a multi-year effort, and I have to say that Burnley County's been a spearpoint on a lot of these efforts, is a very ambitious criminal justice and behavioral health agenda. And so, there were several bills passed. Jason basically took the lead on those bills, and he can speak briefly to the outcomes of those. So, all in all, I think we did pretty well from an economic development standpoint. There's about $70 million in new lead-up money. There's film tax credits got resolved, and so hopefully, we'll be able to, to start recruiting and getting a lot more film activity going on in the state. J-Tip was relatively well-funded as well. So, I think we're in a good position in terms of our economic development efforts. A couple of things that I would suggest that we do, oh, and let me back up. There were a couple of real substantive tax measures that were passed. House Bill 6 was an omnibus tax bill. And in that bill is the imposition of remote sales, i.e. internet sales. And that should result in approximately $30 million coming into the county coffers once that is fully implemented within a three-year period. There was also an increase in the auto excise tax. A large portion of that increase will go into local government road funds, for which the county can apply to the state to get additional road dollars. So, and there was also a piece of legislation that the Association of Counties has been working on for a while, and that's to de earmark some of the local option tax increments from grocery receipts tax. And so, that legislation passed, and I think the county is, is going to be just fine in that. In fact, I think we'll end up making a little bit of money on it in conjunction with the other, the other tax measure. So, from a, from a revenue standpoint, we'll be getting a little bit more money in our grocery receipts tax take.
Excuse me, Dan, Commissioner O'Malley.
Just real quick, Dan, what, what did you say that the anticipated revenue from the, basically, internet tax was going to be for the county?
It will end up being about $30 million after the full implementation of House Bill 6 after a three-year period. There's a phase-in period for some of the provisions in House Bill 6, so that the local government, the way it was working is that the state was getting just the state portion of the grocery receipts tax from internet sales. Now, the, the local governments will participate in that, and we'll get our local option portions paid as well from these internet, internet companies.
So, it's phased in, so the first year would, would be, is that a slower amount then? I'm sorry.
It'll be a lower amount, and it'll be graduated until full implementation after, I think it's 2021.
It's three years.
So, it's, it's.
That's, that's a lot of revenue.
Yeah, it goes like $7 million the first year, $15 million the second year, and then a full implementation after a three-year period.
Okay.
So.
This is just for Burnley County?
This is just Burnley County. There was a, it, it's, it was underestimated statewide. They were talking about a $60 million hit statewide. But that's, I talked to most of the economists, they've been very, very conservative about that in terms of the internet sales. And I, I really anticipate that it's going to be much more significant than what was in the actual FIRs.
Thank you.
Jason can tell you a little bit about the behavioral and criminal justice package.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, we, I focused specifically this session on criminal justice issues and behavioral health initiatives. I'm just going to go through quickly the primary pieces of legislation that passed that impacted, I think it was Resolution 4, and the number of sub-resolutions that dealt with those areas. After a long period of stalled criminal reforms, we saw a number of criminal reforms passed this year and actually signed into law. We saw HB 43, which is a behavioral health intervention that seeks to have diagnostic stuff done at the jail, and then continue that treatment as people are released. That was passed, and there was about $2.5 million for that and other similar programs in House Bill 2. One of the big initiatives was HB 267, which was a Crime Reduction Grant Act. It did a number of things, it changed how the sentencing commission is structured to require them to analyze data-driven analytical efforts to focus on proliferation of best practices in the criminal justice arena. It also amended how we're going to collect and handle behavioral health, health information so that certain entities can access that information without actually having to get a release. The behavioral health community was on board with that. We're going to go to biometric data as it relates to arrest records per that bill. And then the other big thing is it did amend slightly how we will be organized, or how the CJCC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council or Commission, will be organized statewide. Every jurisdiction in the state, every judicial jurisdiction will have to organize one. It is a requirement under current law, but there are additional requirements in 267 relative to how those coordinating councils will work. Then, the other large portion of that is that there was a grant fund created. The grant fund seeks to allow for best practices to be implemented. Really, only three areas of funding were given money in the junior bills, and those junior bills were SB 536 and HB 548. Now, that is statewide, but specifically, the CJCC locally, the Burnley County CJCC, will be able to apply for a grant. There was about 900 million given, or 900,000, not million, given to implementation of data-driven practices or data-driven program. Some of that money will stay with the New Mexico Sentencing Commission, and they'll push it maybe to New Mexico Tech to develop what they need to on the statewide level. But then, we're also going to have the availability of money so that we can actually start trying to push data into this statewide program to improve best practices within the overall criminal justice system based on data-driven analysis and data-driven understanding. That's really, 267 was a huge piece of legislation. The other large pieces of legislation were HB 342, which is a large omnibus piece of criminal reform. It cobbled together a number of criminal reforms from previous legislative sessions that had bipartisan support but were vetoed. And then, there was the Corrections Restrictive Housing Legislation, HB 364. It didn't negatively impact the county. We worked with the Association of Counties to ensure that it didn't have any negative impact on how MDC is going to be operating with people who do need to go into restrictive housing. HB 427 is going to amend how we deal with suspended licenses in a favorable way that should reduce folks going into jail and should reduce our law enforcement officers having to arrest these folks and take them to jail because they're driving on a suspended license that they didn't know about. And it specifically relates to suspended license for failure to pay fines and fees. So, it's also kind of a fairness issue with that bill. And then, the other one that did get vetoed was HB 564. It sought ambitious reforms for our probation and parole system. The impact that that would have locally is that it would classify serious probation offenses and non-serious technical probation offenses. A significant population of MDC inmates are in there on DOC probation violations. And so, or probation and parole violations. So, it would allow them to be classified, handled more quickly, so that population could actually be more easily identified, and we could, they could get placed back onto probation and parole more quickly. There were about, I don't know, 40 to 50 other criminal initiatives that impact Burnley County to one degree or another. Nothing that was negative made it through. There were efforts to try to unwind some of the bail reform efforts that have been done. Those didn't really go anywhere. They will be something, though, that we'll have to keep an eye on as we move forward. Also, continuing to implement the data-driven best practices in the tenants of 267, because the best way to get additional money for the CJCC, which benefits Burnley County, is to actually pursue those grants, demonstrate that 267 works, put it into practice, and continue to reduce crime on a local level. As the largest jurisdiction in the state, we're going to be at the forefront of that. So, that basically summarizes what happened with criminal justice. It was a super-active session. This is probably a trend that we'll see continuing in the future, because these criminal reforms now have the capacity to actually be signed, and we have money to implement them. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I have a couple of suggestions for, for you and the County Manager to consider. One is that there is a lot of behavioral health and a lot of criminal justice issues out, and a lot of money available. My suggestion is that we talk to the Governor's Office about having a criminal justice slash behavioral health summit of sorts. We have a lot of jurisdictional concerns here, we have a lot of players at the table. And I think that we need to work as well as we possibly can to get it, to make sure that these dollars are spent appropriately, and that they're spent in a coordinated way, so we get the biggest bang for the buck, and address some of the really serious problems that we are facing in the city and in the county, and also statewide in terms of behavioral health. So, I would, I would strongly suggest that we send a letter to the Governor to convene a summit and invite all of the appropriate stakeholders, get to the table, and see how we can coordinate this effort. You all stood up and passed your one eighth grocery receipts tax. You've got money that's available. We need to figure out how to, to leverage Medicaid with those dollars and any number of other things that we could do to, to help address this problem. So, that's one of my suggestions. The other one is, next year, there's going to be probably more capital outlay available. This year, it was, we didn't even go into the severance tax bonding. We have a huge amount of capacity. Oil and gas is still going crazy in terms of production, and so we're going to have a lot of capacity there. I, I don't even venture to, to guess how much capacity there's going to be in severance tax bonds next year. So, because we didn't touch that capacity this year. So, one of the things I think is really important, as I alluded to before, is to have a very coordinated effort. And I know the Governor is trying to figure out how to reform the, or the capital outlay process at the state level. A lot of these programs get funded, a lot of projects get funded and never get put in the ground. And I think there's a lot of opportunity there for us to participate in the, in a capital outlay reform process. And I think we need to, as the largest county in the state, the largest city, we need to be at the forefront of that. So, I would also suggest that we send a letter to the Governor asking that we would like to participate in whatever reform effort she does for capital outlay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner O'Malley.
You had mentioned, Dan, that, you know, and this has been an issue for a long time, projects that get small amounts of money. And, you know, you can understand why legislators have maybe very big districts, and that maybe there aren't very, really big projects. But, so what happened this time? I know that there was a lot of criticism about that in the past, funding, not providing enough funding for a project to get going, just small amounts. It doesn't look like anything's changed.
The only thing that really changed in that regard is that there was a bigger nut. There was so much money that the individual legislators, whereas the last few years, they had maybe $700,000 or $800,000 on the House side, and, and maybe $1 million on the Senate side per legislator, they were looking at $4 million for senators, $4 to $5 million for senators, and, you know, $3 million plus for House members. So, there was a significant amount of money. I think a lot of projects got fully funded. But there were still a lot of stragglers out there that didn't get, you know, they didn't get fully funded. They'll probably not end up getting done. We have the advantage in Burnley County that we have a lot of local revenue, and we have a lot of bonding capacity and some surplus dollars that we can sort of backfill the projects that we don't get enough money for. But in some of the smaller communities, that can be a real issue. And the Governor basically vetoed a lot of stuff that she didn't feel had sufficient amount of appropriation to even move forward with planning. So, that's all part of the reform effort, I think, that we need to, to approach. And as I said, you know, before, a lot of times, the city would do something, we'd do something else, and it just wouldn't jive. And I think that we're on, on the road to being much more cooperative in that regard.
I know there was a lot of work this session, and it was quite a big ball to carry. I mean, that was a lot going on. It was a feeding frenzy up there, just to be honest. We kind of joked that, you know, hopefully, there were some parts left that we could get. But, yeah, it was, I was something else to, to witness. Of course, we're very grateful for what we did get, and I think that you're right. We got a pretty good chunk of change. But I just want to thank you and Jason for your work there. I, I think that to, more than anything, your experience is really important. That you've been there, you understand the way things work, or don't work, I guess I could say. But just the experience of, and having those relationships, and watching out for us, and, you know, I think, and, and one of the most significant things, I think, just, and not too, not too long ago, was getting our, helping to get our, us as a county, you know, a home rule, which was huge. And you had a lot to do with that effort. But just watching for things that could hurt the county, and then, I think, having some ideas to, to help the county. So, appreciate your work, both you and Jason.
Well, thank you. It's our pleasure to serve you.
Dan, I have a question. So, I'm looking at the sheet of capital outlay, and the last one is an item that says UNM North Course Open Space Improvements, and then in parentheses, CTC-related. What's, what's that reference to CTC? I would guess it would be Crisis Trauma Center, but I'm wondering what the connection is. I would guess it would be Crisis Triage Center, but I'm wondering what the connection is.
I think that should have been up, the line above it. Yeah, that refers to the Triage Center, not the CTC, not Crisis Triage Center. That's a misplaced.
Okay, so University Hospital got, so sixty-five eleven, that's four hundred and twenty-eight thousand for the, for University Hospital Crisis Triage Center.
That's all part of our situation. We asked for thirty, they asked for thirty, they ended up getting a big appropriation plus the four hundred thousand. So that's one of the things I think we need to address between the county or among the county, the state, and the university so that we can coordinate that a little bit better than apparently what's been happening in the last six months or so.
I agree.
All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you, Dan, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, if there is no objection, I'd like to move item 11A and vote on that at this point in time. That would be the Adobe Acres Elementary School Technology Request. Madam Clerk, may I have an administrative resolution number, please?
All right, Madam Chair, that would be FR 2019-38.
All right, Commissioner Kazada, do you want to move approval?
Yes, I'd like to move for approval.
Second?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, as you all remember last meeting, the students from Adobe Acres Elementary School came and, you know, as they learned the process of how things work through government, I'm very honored again now to bring our discussion item back as a resolution. As you can tell, I mean, as you can see, there is actually no number in, there's not, I'm not asking for a certain amount of money. What we wanted to do, and if they all want to come down and stand up front one more time, as we vote on this, what I was hoping that, and so what I've had so far is I've had a commitment from our county clerk of two thousand dollars, Linda Stover, Stover has, and Commissioner O'Malley also has promised us two thousand dollars. And my office also can match the two thousand dollars. And so whatever may be left, I'm hoping that through the approval of this resolution that we can reach into some of the DDF of some of the other commissioners so we could reach our goal. And so I didn't put a specific number, it was just what you have available in your district. I know this is for my district, but I think that as we keep continuing to assist APS, like I talked about earlier, it takes a community to help education. And I spoke many times as a school board member that education is a responsibility of our parents and that APS is just there to support you, but education is your responsibility for your children. And so as we look at that, as commissioners, our responsibility to assist APS and what they do for us during the day with our children is to do our best to provide them the technology they need in order to be successful. So that's my comment, and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, for your support of this. Commissioner Kazada, that's awesome. Commissioner O'Malley. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve AR 2019-38. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Congratulations and thanks again for coming. Would anyone like to? Madam President.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We thank you for allowing us to come and meet you and giving us the opportunity to represent our resolution. And we appreciate your generosity in granting us our very own Chromebooks. We know it is a lot of money that you have invested in us and we promise to take care of them and use them in only educational purposes.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you very much for being here. All right, we're now back on the agenda. I move approval of the minutes of the March 28, 2019 budget hearings.
Madam Chair, did we want to go back to item seven for public comment?
Yes, we did. Thank you. How many people do we have signed up for public comment?
We have six this evening.
All right. All right, for everybody who has signed up for public comment today, I want to remind you, everybody has two minutes to speak. A bell will sound when ninety seconds has lapsed, giving you thirty seconds to wrap up your comment. So please do observe that time limit and come to the front when you hear Julie read your name.
Deborah Inman, Don Schrader, Peggy Norton.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, my name is Deborah Inman. I'm the Senior Vice President of Business Development at Albuquerque Economic Development. AED began working with representatives from Rose's Southwest Papers in March of 2018. The company was founded in 1984 and is a very successful family and minority-owned business located in the Ferellas neighborhood just south of Bridge Boulevard. AED is here in support of the company's request for a twenty million, two hundred thousand dollar industrial revenue bond. We believe the investment they are making in new equipment and facilities will allow them to significantly modernize their manufacturing operation and keep them competitive with both national and foreign competition. Additionally, the company will be adding thirty-eight new positions to their operation. We feel that this is a particularly great example of a company continuing to make a long-term investment in Burnley County. And so we respectfully request the Commission's approval of the IRB before you tonight.
Even if Russia wrongly interfered in the 2016 U.S. election, the bloody truth is the United States, for decades, under both Republican and Democrat presidents, has done far worse to over sixty nations. The U.S. CIA overthrew the government of Iran in 1953 and installed the brutal Shah. His secret police murdered up to sixty thousand Iranians and tortured many more. In 1973, the U.S. helped overthrow the president of Chile, the oldest democracy in Latin America. Then the U.S. helped install the vicious dictator Pinochet, who tortured and murdered thousands in Chile. How would we feel if another nation overthrew our government and installed a dictator who tortured and murdered many of us? If we were most people in the world's smaller nations, would we trust the U.S. government? I want all seven-plus billion people on earth to be treated fairly. Hell, no, to the U.S. first. I do not pledge allegiance to the U.S. flag or to any nation's flag. The world, the world is my country. All people, all people are my sisters and brothers.
Peggy Norton, M. Ward, Steve Glass, and Tad Neminski.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I, Chairman, Chairman, I happen to know Janice and Juneau, and I think Commissioner O'Malley would love Red. So, and she can enjoy the ditches and know that the glyphosate ban has made them safer for amphibians, insects, people, everything. I'm pleased to see the commitment of the council in their hiring of a contractor and putting money in the budget for this glyphosate moratorium. I've attended two of the three meetings that have been held. Most committee members have also expressed this same commitment. Cities are jumping into this concept. I have to say, I'm not exactly aware of who is definitely not using it immediately, who is phasing it in, what are alternatives. I haven't seen the presentation, so I can't really comment on the time span that this moratorium is planned for. I did notice in the meetings, we spent a lot of time listening to polarization between viewpoints of whether this is feasible or not feasible. Not really whether it's safe or not, but it's just things have been done a certain way and we aren't sure how we can make this change. There is a new integrated pest management plan that is going to be starting to be used. I think it would be important to have some data, if we aren't going to do this immediately and phase it in, that we compare usage by month of last year to usage this year to usage next year, if that has to be. The State Department of Agriculture has to be pushed to approve less toxic alternatives, and they aren't going to do that until someone does it. So thank you for your support.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I also am speaking on the glyphosate resolution and are very glad of your commitment to this and putting your money where your mouth is. I do have some concerns about timeliness and will point out that you made your decision six months ago. So the staff have had six months to make preparations for the change. They seem to be coming later, they seem to have come later rather than sooner. I also understand, and some of them is even like identifying products, possible replacement products. We essentially had to present potential products to the staff. And understand that with changing of a product may require additional measures, and those could have been, have been identified already, even though they may not be fully implemented until the fiscal year starts and they have the money in the budget. So my concern is about timeliness, and I just lost my train of thought. But I think we don't need to wait a full two years until we say we're not using glyphosate anymore. And progress can proceed in parallel tracks. It doesn't have to be sequential necessarily. So please keep that in mind and do your best to accelerate the timeline. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission or Council. I'm Steve Glass. Some of you may recognize me as a former Burnley County employee, retired in 2011. Before, while I was an employee, I was in charge of managing the stormwater discharge permit. And from that perspective, I would like to speak in favor of your intention to transition to an integrated pest management approach for your parks and open spaces. Compliance with that MS4 permit, the stormwater discharge permit, requires the county to take measures to reduce their own use of toxic chemicals, and reducing the use of glyphosate will accomplish that to some degree. So that, in that regard, it's an excellent choice to move toward an integrated pest management strategy. It also reduces, of course, the health risk exposure to the public and to the employees, reducing some of the legal exposure that the county might experience, given some of the recent national cases that have occurred. I also have been serving on the Board of the Local Soil and Water Conservation District, not the Conservancy, but the Conservation District, the Ciudad Soil and Water Conservation District, for some sixteen years. And it has been our objective all along to encourage and expand local agriculture, local sustainable agriculture in the middle valley here. And part of that is implementing weed management areas and integrated pest management. So from my years of experience on the Conservation District, I can also speak in support of your intention to transition from indiscriminate, I shouldn't say indiscriminate, but widespread use of insecticides and pesticides to a more integrated methodology that employs biological as well as chemical.
Thank you. My name, Tadeusz Neminski, I'm not related to another Tadeusz, which is Tadeusz Lucero. But I get back to Tadeusz Lucero a little bit later in my speech. Now, let's go to, what I want to talk about, that mental money. Who's behind that? Of course, shrinks, nonprofits, and administration. Yes, we have Zdunek. Before Zdunek, that was Tadeusz Lucero. Well, what is Tadeusz Lucero these days? Well, he didn't get too much far, too far. He is Vice President, Senior Vice President for one of the nonprofit, which is Yes Housing. Well, what he's doing there, he's doing best what he knows best, which is money. Yes, I spoke to one of the family and community services official. I asked about money to nonprofits. I got answered, once we give them money, they can do whatever they want it. Nothing we can do. That's right. Big profit without oversight. That's where we at, with our tax money. Without mental health, businesses, you all wouldn't have job. You supporting, you want to keep it this way. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you, Julie. All right, we are now on approval of the minutes. I move, we approve the minutes of March 28, 2019. We have a second from Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And we are now on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, may I have financial resolution numbers and administrative resolutions for these items? Oh, and two ordinance numbers at the end.
Madam Chair, we'll do nine A. That would be 2019-39. Nine E would be 2019-40. Nine G would be 2019-41. Nine H was ordinance number 2019-6. Nine I is ordinance number 2019-7. Ten A is ordinance number 2019-8.
Okay, thank you. All right, I move, we approve the consent agenda. A second?
Sir.
A second from Commissioner Kazada. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, next, we are on ordinance 2019-8. The healthcare gross receipts tax, I move approval.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner O'Malley, and we need to hold a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up?
There's nobody signed up.
All right. Shirley.
My name is Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager, Finance. Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is just the last part of the, what we'll be doing here is with approval of mending the code to ensure that the delayed repeal date of June thirty, twenty-four, 2024 is appropriately published in the county code for the healthcare GRT.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Shirley. We're now on ten B, Introduction of Amendments to the Right-of-Way Ordinance. Mr. County Attorney. We're now on 10B, introduction of amendments to the right-of-way ordinance. Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. You'll be aware of this because you've had some updates as we went through the process of litigation. There was also some legislation involved, and also it would amend your previous taxpayer protection right-of-way ordinance act. So, what this does is it moves us towards a county franchise fee structure. The two items that you see, which are items two and three, would be the templates for it. And item one would be the amendments to the original taxpayer protection right-of-way ordinance to make them all work. We're just asking for these to be introduced for publication. We understand there's some work to be done on it, but we wanted to get going on it. And I can tell you that we feel with our partners that we're working on this with PNM and GASCAL. We're very, very close.
All right, I move approval of 10B. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioners Kazada and O'Malley. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes on a four to one vote.
Thank you.
Take a break. All right. We have already voted on 11A. We're now on item 11B, industrial revenue bond. I move approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, we have an administrative resolution number, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, that's AR 2019-38. No, 42, I'm sorry, 42.
Okay. Thank you. Marcos?
I'm Gerald. I'm Marcos Gonzalez, Assistant Director for Burnaleo County Economic Development Department. Members of the Commission, the economic development staff recommends the approval of the inducement resolution authorizing the Burnaleo County Commission to approve an industrial revenue bond application on behalf of Roses Southwest Paper, Inc. Quickly, this is a $20.2 million IRB. $12 million in Series A will be for the purchase of new equipment at their existing Second Street location. And Series B will be for $8.2 million for the purchase of a new warehouse off Airport Road. And I'll stand for any questions. I'll also note that the company's here as well tonight.
Commissioners, any questions? This is a motion for, this is the inducement resolution, correct?
Madam Chair, yes, correct.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're now on 11C. Madam Clerk, can I have a financial resolution number, please?
Madam Chair, that's FR 2019-43.
And why don't we get one for 11D while we're at it?
2019-44.
All right, thank you. So, I move approval of FR 2019-43. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Talbert. Betty and Katrina, you're here to present this?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Betty Valdez. I'm the Director of Housing. We're here for approval for a reconciliation of a budget item from Behavioral Health. And I'm going to actually let Katrina Hotrim, the Director of Behavioral Health, explain to you what that budget item was originally.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission. This budget item really is about vouchers for transitional living and for motel vouchers. It is a proposal that we introduced and passed with this commission about a year ago, six months to a year ago, that allowed one-time funding up to a million dollars for individuals who were maybe transitioning out of jail who needed motel vouchers, or individuals who were in a system, and they were hard to find, and we were trying to connect them to more services. Motel vouchers would be a great thing for them. The other piece to this is one-time sober living programming, so transitional living programming for individuals that were coming out of substance use disorders and needing some stabilization after they have been in recovery. And so, this would be a short period of time where we'd pay up to a two-month voucher for these types of programs, so that they could then go get a job, get their feet on the ground, and then start in their sober living program.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is a new program, right, for the Burnaleo County? Or do we have a program now that does motel vouchers?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, we would actually contract out somebody to do the motel vouchers. We would hold them in-house here. But we would, I think we're talking about having a provider actually doing the distributing of that.
Okay, so there's providers that do that now? So, we have homeworks and other groups that do that, where they provide, so we're really looking at just adding vouchers to that particular, that system?
That particular system, yes, Madam Chair.
Do we have certain criteria that's different from their criteria?
So, Madam Chair, what the Subcommittee's approved was not only individuals that were having a behavioral health issue in our network, but in any network in Burnaleo County, who needed that stabilization, which I think is different. The other thing that's different is the targeted population. So, we tried not to duplicate populations, but tried to add new populations. So, not only individuals coming out of jail who may need a temporary stay, but looking at a population that wanted to maintain sobriety, including with medication-assisted treatment.
Okay, and I'll just say that I think that, I think it's important to have, for folks to have stability as they're especially leaving the jail. I think one of my criticisms of the program that exists now is a lot of times those vouchers are in places that aren't very safe, especially for women. And some of them are the worst hotels or motels in town. So, I hope that we have a higher standard, to be honest, than what's been out there, because that's my experience. There's a place down not very far from where I live, and it's not good. And there's a lot of folks that stay there through those voucher programs.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, we will work on that. I was not aware.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve FR 2019-44. Oh, sorry, 43. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're now on 11D. I move approval of AR 2019-44. A second from Commissioner Talbert. This is the administrative resolution establishing a glyphosate moratorium. Commissioner O'Malley, do you want to talk to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it'd be good to have a better understanding of the ordinance since we've talked. But I just wanted to say, I thought it was important to, you know, we've made a commitment, I think, to do this, to put a moratorium on it. And it's one of those things where I know every, anytime there's something new like this, there's always this so-called phase-in period. But I think that we, my concern is that, you know, we said we're going to do this because it's harmful, and so we need to get it going. And that's one of the reasons why we, you know, intentionally put some money towards it. But I just want to say this, because after talking with Enrico Roddy, who's been planning and is, I think he was part of this committee or part of this conversation, was that our expectations as a community, that's, I think, part of the problem in terms of space, recreational space and open space, that we have come to expect sort of like a pristine situation, especially with our parks, no weeds, all clean, grasses, you know, everything's perfect. And so, as a result of that, we have turned to chemicals to make that happen over the decades, actually. And that's true for a lot of things, especially, you know, everything from the way neighborhoods are laid out to, you know, our houses, to everything, right? There are expectations about what, how, you know, we should live, or what's the ideal situation in terms of a house or a park or whatever. And so, a lot of times that doesn't match up. And that we're not going to, if we start to really look at our spaces again, or creating new ones, that we have to be mindful of that. And that, you know, if we're going to get away from using a lot of chemicals, we can't expect that we're going to have these pristine situations. Because, you know, unless you're just spraying stuff and killing stuff, you know, that's pretty much it. So, that said, why don't you go ahead and tell me what you got there?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having me. Debbie, Debbie Jo couldn't make it. She had a death in the family. So, I'm going to present this to you. This is an update on glyphosate moratorium implementation. Thank you for the appropriations at the last board meeting to support the additional funding for land management to implement the moratorium. We have refined the cost and process of implementation of the glyphosate moratorium over two years, as outlined in the previous presentation to BCC on 26/19. We have not, we have met with citizens, advocates, groups, three times, and researched alternatives. They have provided which on, which are not, at this time, registered to New Mexico Department of Agriculture. They gave us a list of different products that we can try. A majority of them weren't listed as, or registered through New Mexico Department of Agriculture. A few of them had warning labels. There's an ortho product that does carry glyphosate in it. A lot of their products carry it, so we cannot use those. The group will formalize, formalized going forward as a citizens' steering committee. We look forward to working with them and getting a different input and proceeding and getting things done. The thing we don't want to do is fail. And we're going to try to press on and with everybody's help, get this going. And hopefully, we get everything going to protect the public, ourselves, as far as employees, and do the right thing.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner O'Malley?
So, you mentioned that, I mean, obviously Roundup is registered with the state, even though it's, you know, it's got its toxicity problems.
Toxicity, yes.
It's toxic. So, what does that mean? I mean, that they're just registered with the state? Does that mean that we, this, every product that we use has to be registered with the state? Is that what you're saying?
According to Steve from New Mexico Department of Agriculture, these companies have to register to New Mexico through the Department of Agriculture and register their products and get themselves on the list, because they got to go through different appropriations as far as getting their product out to the market. And I believe EPA has to also sign off on that.
Okay, that'd be important to really get an idea, because I mean, these products are available for all of us to use. So, I don't understand why the county would be, would have a problem using them. I mean, obviously, there are products that are for sale, get them on Amazon, for example. There's this one called, I can't forget the name of it. But basically, it's an orange oil mix. There's a lot of orange oil that's in these products.
It depends on the label. There's different products out there. A lot of them are registered. You know, as far as lows and home people, they'll carry those and sell them to the public itself. As a municipality, we have licensed employees, so we have to follow the regulations through Department of Agriculture. And we have to follow the labels of every single one of those. And they have to be registered products through the state.
Okay, well, you know, I mean, I'm sure you, I know you're told that, and you obviously believe that. I would like us to really look into that, because that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, quite frankly, as a county with, you know, that we have the ability or the choice to do, to use other products if we want to. But that being said, and I think part of it was, we have to understand that we'll probably have to have more labor. It's more labor-intensive, I think, is another thing that was brought up, which was why we were putting more money towards it. So, what is the, and I haven't, Mr. Barney, you've probably worked on, did you work on the resolution?
Yes.
So...
Madam Chair.
Okay, so where are we now with this resolution? Basically, we said we wanted to have a moratorium, and then you guys need to move forward with, is that what this resolution says now? I haven't seen it for a while. I don't know if it's been amended.
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner O'Malley, so the resolution is before you as a two-year implementation of the moratorium. So, there's, the first year, we would be basically eliminating the usage of glyphosate on a third of the properties. And then, over the next two years, we would be phasing that out. That's what we're proposing at this point. That's what we, based on what we are capable of doing, you know, to make this huge change, so.
You don't have the capacity to do it within a year?
Right now, it'll be hard for us. I mean, we don't have the staff to do it. That's why we're asking for this moratorium, as far as letting us build into it. If we go straight into it and cut everything off, I don't believe we can sustain taking care of these properties, because we're already overwhelmed as it is right now. And, you know, it's hard to control these weeds, especially now with the moisture coming in. And, you know, we still get calls from everywhere as far as, what are you going to do with these weeds? And, you know, it has become a problem.
Right, I can understand, certainly with the rain and everything, that it can get out of control. But typically with glyphosate even, you have to get them early, or else it doesn't make a whole lot of difference. Because once they get pretty big, it's not that effective, actually. A lot of these particular herbicides are like that. Well, I think that, and I would hope that, we would be able to have some kind of a, well, so far, at this point, you haven't used glyphosate. It's my understanding that you've stopped using it up to now?
Commissioner O'Malley, that is correct. We have not used any.
I, to be honest with you, I think two years is too long. I would hope that you would come up with a plan within a year. And so, I'd like to amend that, and that the plan would be that we work within a year. And I don't know where that legislation is. Mr. Martinez, I don't know where that, what the language be.
Say that again.
You should what? This one? This one doesn't, they won't open. So, thank you very much. We'll just move forward and amend the legislation that we would like to see this implemented within a year. I know it's not going to be easy, but it's, this isn't going to be easy. It's never, it was never about being easy. It was about trying to be, to do the right thing for the health and welfare of the community. And we managed to get through without all these products in the first place. I think we're going to have to figure out what to do, and we're going to have to be clever about it. So, did you find out where the, where that was? Is it the first paragraph? Well, I don't know if we have to come up with the language right now, or if we could, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it has specific dates, but I think, understanding what you would like, I think it would be better if we just put it in one year from the date.
Okay.
So, a general moratorium would be in effect one year from the date of, because right now, it says from October 26, 2018, through April 30, 2019.
Okay.
And I think since it had a specific date in there, we probably want to just put one year from the date of.
Okay. Do I just say that we'd amend it, or?
Yeah, and then we'll put the language in.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move an amendment to change it from two years phased in to one year.
All right, I'll second that. Any questions or comments about the amendment?
I think also the, I'm going to get this right. And it has a second paragraph that is leading to a complete elimination of usage by April 30, 2021. So, we'll adjust those two dates accordingly. So, implement on So, implement on this date, and then having the final elimination by one year from that date. And we'll, we'll get both those dates right for you.
Okay. And then, I think we need some...
Should we vote on that amendment?
Oh, sorry.
So, we have a motion and a second for the amendments to make the changes to the implementation, the effective dates, is that the...
That's correct. So, we'll get the right date for it, and make it one year, and then have the complete elimination of usage, have that date also. Right now, it's April 30, 2021. It's going to move up a year. So, it'll be in the year April of 2020. But I'll get the right date for you.
Okay, right, we have a motion and a second on that amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
I don't, that's pretty much it.
All right, any questions or comments about this? All right, we have, let's see, I move that we approve AR 2019-44 as amended. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioners O'Malley and Kazada. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, we have no approvals, we have no discussion. So, next meetings will be Tuesday, May 14, 2019, the zoning meeting, 3:00 p.m. here in the Vinceney Criago Chambers. That same day, Tuesday, May 14, 2019, Board of Finance meeting at 4:30. That will be followed by administrative meeting at 5:00 p.m. With that, this meeting is adjourned.